This is April 2nd, 2018, 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we get a roll call, please?
Breaker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambell?
Here. All right. Tonight, first, we have a Mayor's Award. I'm glad that I have her all by herself, but I can single her out. And I remembered what you looked like. I thought that was you. I met a little girl, it had been several years back, and it had just been, I don't know, I was probably one year into being Mayor. And there were a bunch of big people that were being mean to me. And they were sending me emails and saying I was using nicknames and all kinds of crazy stuff and just going all off on me, saying I was doing it wrong. I thought, well, man, you know, I thought you had the freedom to do it right once you got nominated, but it didn't seem that way. But I had an event that I had to go to, and this has been an emotional week for me, so I'm not so... But I had an event that I had to go to. It was at, down the street at Aldo Leopold, I believe. I believe it was at Aldo Leopold. I had to speak for something, I can't remember what it was, and you took the time. I still have this at my house, I meant to bring it tonight, and it's got, I mean, it's felt in the dishwater, whatever, I won't allow it to be thrown away. It won't. My daughter said, "Dad, are you gonna throw that away?" I said, "Never, never. When I die, I want you to find Karina and give it back to her." Until I said, "Thanks," because I look at this, any time that I have a bad day or that somebody's trying to get after me and give me a hard time, I think about Karina. I said, "This little girl that just didn't even know me, but took the time out of her day that made me feel so special. I'm telling you, you made me feel so special and so big that day, and I can't give you back what you gave to me, but I just want to be a blessing to you and I want to be encouragement to you. So I hope this catches you at a time in your life where maybe, maybe you need this, because when you gave me the little card, I needed it." Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude, your enduring smile, your beautiful artistry, and your heart of gold helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. You are a special young lady. On April 2nd, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Karina Sears. Would you come on down here? Before I give you this stuff, can I have a hug too? This is your special proclamation. I hope that it hangs somewhere at your house. Somewhere special. And I thought, well, I better pick up something nice. So this is a really bag of little whatnots, things that are kind of heavy, so. I just want to say, I hope that's an encouragement to, to people everywhere, that you never know when being nice to that person is really gonna make a difference. You never know who that person's going to be or who they are, but just being courteous, just being nice. You're awesome, my friend. Rock star status. Next, we have a proclamation.
All right. Your Honor, I have a proclamation. Whereas every office worker generates about 12 pounds of waste paper monthly, and whereas one ton of recycled paper saves three cubic yards of landfill space, 17 trees, 7,000 gallons of water, and 4,100 kilowatt-hertz of energy, enough to heat an average home for six months. And whereas the 20th Annual Clean Out Your Files Day, being celebrated on April 12th, is designed to increase recovery of office paper for recycling by encouraging office workers to purge old files of unwanted paper. And whereas this event is sponsored locally by DMC Regional Waste Commission, Hope Haven Document Shredding, Titan Broadcasting, and the Greater Burlington Partnership. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2018, Clean Out Your Files Day in the City of Burlington, and ask citizens, businesses, and government agencies, and other organizations to strive to recycle whenever possible, not only on this day, but also throughout the year. Signed and sealed, the second day of April 2018, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
Darvin Kendall? There he is.
Thank you, Council, for having me here this evening and for taking time to proclaim April 12th as Clean Out Your Files Day here in Burlington. We do invite everybody, homeowners, businesses, councilmen, councilwomen, to come in and help us recycle paper on that day. We'll be at the recycling center from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so please come out and see us. Thank you very much.
This time, we have a tenure award.
Your Honor, I have it in front of me, and it's my pleasure to present, in grateful recognition of 30 years of dedicated service to the City of Burlington, as of April 1st, 2018, we hereby present Darren Grimshaw with a certificate of recognition.
Super cop. Super cop.
I've done too much walking, but I gotta go get some of that.
Please have a word. Nice try, though. Slickster.
I just thought I was gonna get by. So I'd just like to say thank you to the Council for, obviously, the recognition, but more importantly, the opportunity to work for a city like Burlington. As most of you know, I've lived in Burlington for most of my life, graduated from high school here, went to college here, and came back for one reason, and that was simply just to serve the people that live in this community. I know that over the years of being in law enforcement, we've had our ups and downs, and there's been a lot of concern recently, but I assure people, my family, my friends live in this community, I still remain in this community for a reason, and that's because it's a great place to live. It truly is. And although we have some issues from time to time, this town is full of blessed people and lots of great hearts out there. So with that said, I thank you for the recognition of the 30 years. I've got a few more to go, and then be on to other adventures, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Pass on a message for me. Let George and Marty know they did a pretty good job. A proclamation of retirement. Finally got to this point. Man, we milked it for everything it was worth. I mean, we had diaper pictures and whatnot. I mean, I don't know if you guys caught all of that, but we knew this day was coming, and it's come to make it official, so what a blessing you've been. Let's roll through with it.
Your Honor, I have the bittersweet privilege of reading this proclamation. Proclamation of retirement. Whereas the City of Burlington wishes to honor Chief L. Douglas Beard for over 30 years of service as a professional law enforcement officer of the Burlington Police Department, and whereas Doug Baird has provided the citizens of Burlington with outstanding, loyal, and dedicated service, beginning as a police officer in January, on January 1st, 1988. During his tenure, he worked his all patrol shifts and was assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division and assigned to the Southeast Iowa Narcotics Task Force in 1990. In 1997, he was promoted to Sergeant in the Patrol Division until 2005, when he was promoted to Lieutenant. Doug served in this capacity for less than two years, when in 19, or 20, 2007, God, you've been here for years. He's become, he became a major and was the Operations Commander for the department. While in this capacity, Doug was selected as one of two officers from the State of Iowa to attend the 236th session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, graduating in March 2009. Following this, he served as the Acting Police Chief from March 2012 until he was officially appointed Police Chief on August 21st, 2012. Chief Baird formally retires April 6th, 2018. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, of Iowa, do hereby recognize and commend Doug Baird for his outstanding service and commitment to the welfare and safety of the citizens of Burlington. We, the City Council, wish him sincere congratulations and much happiness in his retirement. Signed and sealed, this day, the 2nd of April, 2018, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
Big chief.
And we also have a lovely plaque for him. The City of Burlington hereby honors Doug Baird in recognition and appreciation of 30 years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington.
I also got you this, and as a council, I wanted to present it to you. It's got the Burlington Police Department patch, the coin, and the chief emblem. In here, you'll be able to put your badges and your awards, and I want to let you know that on Friday, they took the State of Iowa flag off of the Capitol of Des Moines, and we will have it this Friday, and that will go in this case for you.
For this one, let's all get a picture with the big right over here by the sign. Let's get everybody, yeah, let's get everybody in on this. I have to tell you this, my daughter said, she goes, "Ooh, wait, that picture of Chief with Bambi?" She goes, "If I'd known him then..." I'm telling Mary. Big chief.
Was it okay if I pull it there?
Not today.
I'll do my best to get through this, but Mayor and Council, I'd like to begin by thanking my wonderful wife, Mary, for all the love and support over the years. This career would not have been possible without your kind and caring support. I would like to thank my son and daughter for standing by my side. I'm proud of you. I know it is not easy being the children of a police officer. I would like to thank all of the men and women of the Burlington Police Department who put their lives on the line every day for this great community. You're the best in the business. I will miss each and every one of you. Please be safe. I would like to thank Kristin Eland for her tireless work in the department's administrative She is a very dedicated and loyal employee to me and the command staff. Thank you to the City Council, City Manager, department heads, and the entire staff for your ongoing support of the Police Department. I asked myself, if you could think of one word that represented your career over the last 30 years, what would it be? It was an easy answer, grateful. While attending the FBI National Academy in '09, I was having a conversation with an officer from Texas. We were discussing an article in a police publication regarding grateful. I will share some of those words with you. It truly represents what peace officers do every day to make this country a better place. I feel grateful to have served this community for 30 years as a Burlington police officer. I've seen the cruelty that one person can inflict on another and the incredible kindness of everyday people towards the less fortunate. I've seen a hand touching a shoulder and a few whispered words bring comfort to the weary. I have heard loud cries of parents as an officer recovers their lost child. I have smelled death so strong I could taste it. I have buried my friends, seen their families grieve, feeling lost and alone, yet surrounded by a sea of uniforms. We have shared the weight of society's failures, heaped upon the backs of peace officers who endure it, forge ahead with courageous hearts. If people could see what my eyes have seen, they would understand better what the few do for so many. People would be proud of these flawed, yet extraordinary, human beings who give so much hope and protection to the defenseless. To be a brother of such men and women is an honor if you are permitted, and I'm grateful to God for this privilege. I'm so proud of my partners at the Burlington Police Department. I will leave you with this quote from Winston Churchill that has real meaning to any career, and that was displayed tonight by you, Mayor. And here it is. "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." Thank you.
It's getting heavy in here at night. Woo, it's getting heavy in here. Oh, boy. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Major. Thank you, Major.
Two great guys right there.
Tonight, we've, wait till we get that. Next, we have the Citizens Academy graduation. So I would first like to say, and this is, this is a new deal, and it's, we're always trying to find ways to become better. That's what we want to do, and some of that comes from citizens, regular, normal people, just like some of you that are sitting out in the audience. Some of them come from our own employees, but trying to get people to get more involved in city business, to have a better understanding, all of those things, so that people can see that we're trying to be as transparent as possible. It's not easy to do, so we have to come up with things to, we have to come up with ideas and ways to do these things. I want to thank Charlie and Tabitha for spearheading this, and this was our first annual, our first annual graduate, or Citizens Academy. So let me read this, and then we'll, we'll give off our, we've got some awardees here that I'm really excited to give them out to. These are, all of you that are getting these, you'll be the first of many that will come through after you and will learn about how we, how we do business in Burlington, and you can be a part of that process to actually help make it, make it better. Okay. Congratulations to the graduates of the Citizens Academy. Twelve nominated members took part in an eight-week class that allows citizens of the community to participate in learning behind-the-scenes functions of the city. It is designed to teach citizens how their local government works for them. Throughout this eight-week course, these participants traveled to each city department to listen to presentations about how those specific departments operate, from budget items to day-to-day tasks. This class teaches the importance of understanding how the city operates, and it allows the city to be, to be more transparent. Through these last seven weeks, each participant has learned the tools to be an ambassador and a point of information for the community, which is phenomenal. So I'm going to list off these names as you come. I'm gonna ask if you would come forward and receive your certificate, and then if you would like, after receiving your certificate, if you would like to come to the podium and just have a brief word. We'd appreciate that.
You're really putting him on the spot, aren't you?
Well, I didn't call you up, Tabitha. Or would you like to take care of it? Good to see you.
Maybe Chuck and I will take care of it.
All right. Our first recipient tonight, Dale Allison, would you please come down? Congratulations. Mr. Allison, would you like to, are you scared to think about your experience?
No, I think, I think this is a good exercise. I encourage other people to apply, to teach their families, and, oh, no, I think it's a good thing for the community and, well, no.
Dale Allison, everybody. Our next winner, I met him back when he was just a little guy singing Everybody Wants to be a Cat. Look at him now. Robert Kreitzer, come on down.
Robert Kreitzer.
I actually do want to say something. I wrote something.
I'm not gonna sing some?
Oh, I'm not gonna sing. This will actually be in the newspaper on Wednesday, so, but I wanted a chance to read it in front of everybody else. We're not playing Pokemon Go. Hold on, I'm sorry. All right. This is about the Citizens Academy. The Burlington Citizens Academy was designed to give interested individuals an opportunity to learn about city government, ask questions about how it works, and we did that once a week for eight weeks. The stated goal of the program was to educate and inform and to share information with members of the community who might be willing to pass the information on to others, and I did that weekly. This is because the city government, like Shane said, would like to improve communication and transparency with the public. They would like to help citizens learn what they can do to help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. For the last eight weeks, I've been doing this, and it's been an honor. From the first class to the last, I've been impressed by the quality of people I have met that have worked for the City of Burlington. Every one of them's a rock star. Tabitha and Charlie are great, and every person I've met since, I'm just impressed by all of them. I just can't believe there's so many good people in one spot. Eric, Mr. McGregor back there, you all just wowed me every time I talk to you. They made it interesting, and more importantly, they made it fun. During the past eight weeks, we have been busy Burlingtonians. We toured City Hall, and we had a meet and greet with the Mayor and the City Council. We ran through Public Works, literally ran, and learned about current and future street and sewer projects. We caught a behind-the-scenes look at the library with Rhonda. Received a tour of the Police Department with Major Grimshaw and Lieutenant Schaefer. We, we did a, we learned where our drinking water comes from, from the water treatment plant. I found out about Ken Gregory staying on-site for more than a week in his camper, and he was ferrying his workers in and out on a boat. And when I asked him why, he said people need clean water to drink. And that called a service to just go above and beyond, and I quit his post. It just floored me. And then Don Fitting at the wastewater treatment plant, is he here tonight? Mr. Fitting, I'm totally on board with the trash can deal when you told us what it's doing to your workers, how it's just breaking them down physically to lift 50-pound cans a thousand times a day. I'll give you $4 a month, I don't care. Thank you for caring about your workers. We met about, we had a Parks and Recreation talk with Eric and, I don't remember the other fellow's name, Ryan? And they told us things I had no idea about the parks and what goes into it, and how they care for the trees, and some of the projects they've got going on. They talked about, you know, how we take care of nuisances and stuff like that. So I'm literally learning everything there is to learn about city government. So in the spirit of the program, I've done my best to share these experiences with the community as I progress through the course, and people respond to what I share. And what I've found is that there's a community-wide misconception about what you guys do and what you don't do. And I think most of the problems are communication issues. They aren't taking their concerns to the right people, so they don't know which department or which person to talk to, and I think that's a big issue. Or you guys don't necessarily get word out about what's going on in a place where everybody hears about it. And so you've talked about the Cascade Bridge, you've talked about the Flood Wall, you've talked about a lot of issues that people continuously bring up, and somehow they still don't know. And it's because they go to Facebook and listen to their friends, I think. The other consistent issue is, what are you guys doing with our tax money? And I don't feel like you're wasting any of it. It might happen occasionally, we're all gonna make mistakes, but I really think you guys are pension pennies, and you're, you're holding it down, and I know when you guys do your budgets and you come ask for money, they have to tell you no to a lot of things, and, you know, you consider what our revenue will be, and you try to leak dollars with results. And I think that's fair. And for those of you that don't know, they start in November, and they don't decide on the budget till February. They put three months of work into this process before it ever, before it's ever finalized. Now, we all have the right opportunity to be part of this process. It can be boring, but it's worth it if you want to understand why money is spent on some things and not on others. And I've said this before, if you want to know, you have to go. So I'm encouraging everybody to come to City Council meetings, and I'm encouraging everybody to be part of the Citizens Academy. It was an amazing experience. I know that during the last election for City Council, people used the platform of, "We want more police officers, we want to fix infrastructure." And as I sit here, I realize the money's not there unless we cut the budget or we raise revenue. But we have a lot of bills that we're taking care of that were left to us before Jim Furno took over, and so we're doing some debt servicing, and that's where our money's going. So once that's under control, I'm sure we're gonna fix a lot of things that need fixed. We're on the right path, and you just need to trust these men and women to get us there. I think we're often critical of our local government when we can't have what we were promised, but we still have to pay our bills. But I digress. The class the Citizens Academy had on the topic of budgets wasn't exactly thrilling, but I would sit through it once. I hope there's more in the future, and I hope someone listening or reading this in Wednesday's paper will consider going in, and I hope they'll enjoy it as much as I did. I do believe that community involvement is the key to success for Burlington. I think we all win when we're well-informed and we're working together to achieve that goal of a better Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, this next individual, Drake Fenton. Come on down. Would you like to have a word?
First, I want to thank Tabitha and Charlie, because they took all the time out of their busy schedules to meet us down here at the class. I come here right after work every day. I'm a business owner in town, so it was imperative that I learn more about the ins and outs of the city. And also, everybody else that took part in all the classes and spent your time, you could be home with your families and things, and give back to us. And I don't want to run long like, like, Tabitha, over here, Tabitha, we're in the class, but I just want to thank everybody and try to build a better future for my son over there.
You're doing it. You're doing it, son. You're doing it.
I want him involved, I gotta get involved, and I think that's what we should do, okay?
Thank you. I just gotta say this again. Drake Fenton, you're doing it. You're building a better future for your son. Be proud of your father. You ought to be. I'm proud of him. The next one is Michael Gorman.
Thank you. Please have a word.
Well, I just, everybody's here for you, but the Michael.
Yeah, that's okay. I think I ain't talking. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to have been able to be a part of this training program, and I really want to thank all the heads of the department that took the time to discuss and give us an idea of what goes on in their departments, and especially to Charlie and Tabitha, for their organization and their dedication to make this a success.
I always forget how to say his name, because he's trying to get involved in everything. Sean Jalima?
Jalima.
Jalima. Very good. I don't get it. Please, have a word?
Just a brief one. I think it's really important that everybody find a way to positively contribute to the community. That's really what it comes down to. We all have our own strengths that we can contribute. It's all about that team effort, and I've seen it in all the different capacities that I've volunteered and worked with, and that's really what it comes down to, is we just all need to come together and work, and there's nothing that we can't do to work together.
Superman. I'm named Michael Kent. Come on down.
My friends, have a word?
Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Everybody does a really good job, and we appreciate what everybody does. Jerry Murray, come on down.
No, just a brief one. I think it's really important that everybody find a way to positively contribute to the community. That's really what it comes down to. We all have our own strengths that we can contribute. It's all about that team effort. And I've seen it in all the different capacities that I've volunteered and worked with groups. And that's really what it comes down to. We just all need to come together and work. There's nothing that we can't do to work together.
Superman. I'm Michael Kent. Come on down. Make my friends have a word? Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Everybody does a really good job and we appreciate what you guys do. Jerry Murray, come on down. Congratulations. Have a word?
Uh, I would just echo what, uh, people before me said, that it was a great opportunity. I appreciate that, all the work that you all put into it. I was really impressed with all of the different department heads and, uh, them explaining to us what they do so that we can understand, have an understanding of what they do. I think you guys have a great team here and I appreciate what you do for us, so, thank you.
Eric. Eric, come on down. Hey, man, have a word?
So just a couple things. One is that, um, is that this forum gave it, gave us an opportunity to, to take some of the issues that were, um, that were on the forefront of our minds and share those concerns directly with the people who had, um, the most knowledge about of those particular issues. Uh, there is a wealth of knowledge that resides within the employees of the city of Burlington that is almost unimaginable. And I think what we got exposed to more than anything else was the great complexity and the tremendous amount of, of information that is required to run this city. So it was a great experience, uh, for us and I would encourage anyone who has the opportunity to take advantage of this. Uh, my thanks to, uh, to Tabitha and, uh, Nick and, and Charlie for a, a great job and, and Eric also for putting this on. Thank you.
Mr. O N T Sloan. You can only say that name like, "O N T Sloan." Give him a word, please.
Well, yeah, I just want to say that, uh, this is a great organization. This city is great. The department heads are great. And as far as the program we went, where we did, and Tabitha, if you look on, you might find on mine, we had, last week we had to fill out how we liked the class, what could make a better police and fire department. Maybe spit them up. So there's a lot of knowledge and a lot to know, especially these days in time, with those two bodies of this city. So, maybe take that into consideration. Other than that, it's a great program. I'm just fortunate and happy and honored to be a part of it. And with that, let's go Burlington.
Uh, this next, this, uh, do we have record? Is it, are we positive that she completed? Okay, Tabitha's getting a little... Patricia Wall. Come on down.
Oh, I was...
Have a word, please?
I was here because, um, my dad has served the police department, um, all of my life. And he retired, came back, retired again, and he worked for the city again. And I kind of wanted to see why he thinks it's so great. And I was able to get that opportunity this week, so it was just a good experience for me.
Awesome. Come on. Normally, I'm not a named butcher, but, um, I don't know if it's whining or weaning, but Mary, come on down. Whining?
Whining, like wine, like wine and dine.
Wine and dine. Play that one, please.
Oh, um, I, I just wanted to say thank you also. Everybody did a great job thanking. I originally come from Chicago and where you get involved, you don't mean much. But this is a small town and it's charming. It really is charming to be able to do this kind of activity, meet the mayor and the head of the fire department and everybody else and be involved and make a difference. So I would encourage people to get to know everybody because it's, not all towns are like this. And we're pretty lucky to have such a professional staff here that we can learn from. So, thank you very much.
And last but not least, he pissed me off just the other day when I was trying to get gas and it was really cold, but I'm not gonna bring it up at a council meeting. Dan Wishmeyer, come on down. Thank you. You probably deserved it. I'm not even sure if I cut you off or not, but... I'm not sure either. I don't remember. I would like to echo the fellow members of this class, what they said. Thank you. Council, mayor, everybody. I'd like to thank my wife for letting me go out on Thursday nights for the last two months. And, uh, it is a privilege and an honor. Thank you. Do you have a ready number back up and we can just get a pic right in front of the, right in front of the screen?
Yeah, we'll get a pic over there. I do need to get a...
Okay. Everybody from the council?
People's foreheads are lit up. They want another one.
Well, let's just stand right, we'll just stand right here.
Congrats.
I wish I was gonna say, pardon.
Oh, that'd be nice. That'd be nice. Yeah, we could just weasel that. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, get in there. Yeah, come around and get in there. Make sure they can see Peter Butter.
He's with us every time.
That's right.
Everybody ready?
Wishmore, whose last name is that?
No, that's good. And while you're up there, I do want to make, um, one special recognition to Linda Murray. She was, um, a council member that joined us every week through this as well.
Loved it.
Yeah, so you are a honorary graduate, graduate too. Okay.
This is family rocks. Most people live and die in community. You don't really know how it works.
Go to the doctor and keep going until they get it sorted out.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Give him a few more seconds. Okay. All right, so next up, we have the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have one resolution. Resolution amending swimming lesson fees for Denkirk Park Pool. And then we have, uh, several set date for public hearings for April 16th, 2018. The first is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Seal Coast Street Program. The second is a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 HMA overlay project. The third is a consideration of an application for a housing sustainability grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program. The fourth is a consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 163 Environmental Nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. The fifth is a consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter 100 Stormwater Utility and replacing it, replacing with a new Chapter 100 Stormwater Utility. I remember those are just, um, set dates for public hearings that we will talk about those items at a later, at, on April 16th. And we have one appointment. And it is for Low-Rent Housing Agency, Richard Mellinger. Do I have anybody in the audience who has any issues with the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
I have none.
None? Okay. Let's, uh, go ahead and vote on it.
I move that all matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been formally discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and here, be hereby approved.
Second?
Rinker?
Here, uh, aye, sorry.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a hearing. Let's see. Consideration of a sale of a portion of North 7th Street Right-Away, located west of property locally known as 625 Valley Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Uh, this, uh, request is for the portion of, uh, 7th Street Right-Away shown on the map, um, located between Valley and Market Street. Uh, this portion of Right-Away was vacated, uh, over 50 years ago. Uh, did not have any record of transfer or sale at that time. Um, so at this time, the owner of the property at 625 has requested to, uh, purchase that. Uh, there is a portion of building on that, uh, Right-Away. There is a sewer on the western half of, uh, this Right-Away that we would not, uh, recommend vacating or selling any further, uh, portion of this. Uh, we did have interest from neighbors to the, uh, west, on the west side of this, uh, Right-Away as well, but, um, based on that sewer, would not recommend, uh, doing that at that time. This would sell the eastern 40 feet, uh, as shown in yellow here, to R and R Development for $500.
All right, do we have anybody in the audience with questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
I move that the hearing regarding consideration of sale of a portion of North 7th Street Right-Away, located west of the property locally known as 625 Valley Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions be closed.
Second.
Moved in second?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
This been motion to close, so now you can do it.
Thank you. Your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of a portion of North 7th Street Right-Away, located west of the property locally known as 625 Valley Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second? Let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street Right-Away, located adjacent to the property at 1408 Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Uh, this is, uh, again, a vacation of a portion of property just north of Harrison to the west of South 14th Street. Uh, we went through this process a couple of years ago, uh, with the properties to the north at 1804, 1802, um, South 15th Street, uh, and vacated, uh, the portion of Right-Away, 14th Street Ri- uh, Right-Away on the east side of their properties and sold them. At the time, the owner of 1408 did not, uh, desire to move forward with, uh, vacation and sale adjacent to their property, um, believe it was a contract sale at the time. They now wish to complete this process. This did go to the planning commission on February 21st and they vote, voted six to zero to recommend approval of the vacation of the Right-Away, um, based on, uh, the current conditions surrounding and maintenance of an easement over the property. Uh, there is an easement, uh, for utilities as well as, uh, access over the existing travel portion there, so, um... With that, if there's any other questions or concerns, try and answer them.
All right, great. Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns? See none? Counsel? None? Okay.
Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the First reading of the ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street Right-Away, located adjacent to the property at 1408 Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
You don't need to move the resolution.
Okay. Your honor, I have a resolution approving the, oh, did you want to move the, where you're ready to go? Your honor, I have, I have a resolution approving a bond purchase agreement for a general obligation corporate purchase bonds, Series 2018A. Sorry about that.
Second?
Uh, this is, uh, borrowing for, uh, CIP items, uh, for this upcoming budget. It includes, um, actually ongoing borrowing for the flood wall currently underway. It, uh, in the neighborhood of 1.9 million. Uh, includes funding for Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, uh, reconstruct, or replacement, rehab to Cascade Bridge, um, a HMA asphalt overlay project and...
Central Avenue.
Central, whatever. Not Cascade, sorry. There's a panic attack. There's $350,000 towards Central just to do some basic repairs on it. Um, 1.4 million of HMA asphalt overlay and 150,000 of, uh, miscellaneous street rehab. Um, we also have, uh, Travis Squires from Piper Jaffray to talk about, uh, this stage is a final sale of the bonds to provide the funds to do those projects. So go ahead.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Uh, Travis Squires at Piper Jaffray. I have some information in a packet form. Uh, what you're gonna see in general is an update to some of the information I presented in January that had the existing debt profile of the city and then how this new debt kind of layers onto that. Um, the first portion does talk about today's sale results, so I'm gonna talk just a little bit about the process. Obviously, a few of you, this is a new process, selling bonds and what that looks like. So I'll just give you a little bit of backdrop on what's taken place since January. Forgive me if it goes a little long, but if you have questions, do, uh, go ahead and ask them and feel free to interrupt. This isn't meant to be a, a lecture hall, uh, presentation. So, um, back in January, as we kind of finalized the financing plan, the city had worked through your capital planning process, identified the projects that you were going to fund. Uh, the next process is then to begin, uh, preparing documents to sell these bonds to the investors and the public. Uh, so this involved engaging a bond attorney, Dorsey and Whitney, as your bond and disclosure counsel. And they assisted with drafting an offering document, uh, that then went out to the investor public, which you saw and approved a few weeks back. Um, in that time, we had a due diligence call, um, which simply is a, kind of a fact-finding call between us, your attorney, and the city staff. Uh, there was also a bond rating call. Um, the bond rating call is very important from the standpoint that they assign, um, I guess, I'm, it almost acts as a pricing metric, like if you're thinking about a credit score for your own personal finance of going and getting a mort- mortgage. Um, in that case, the result was as expected. You received an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's, same as where you were last year. Very good, um, you know, considering the, uh, you know, state of the, the city's finances and your recovery, you know, we're very pleased with that. Um, you have a few limiting factors that have nothing to do with things that are within your control. You may have read the bond rating report and you might have remarked that it seemed a little harsh. Um, and, you know, from some of those things, you know, I tend to agree. But part of that is just, they're actually required to say that. If you didn't know this, they got, uh, in a lot of trouble back in '08, '09 for some of the things that went on with defaults on mortgage-backed securities that were rated. So their language is intentionally harsh, but it's really just following the template. Um, if you fall below median household income, you know, they're gonna classify an economy as weak despite the fact that you might have a lot of good things going on locally that would indicate growth and vibrancy and, and things that are positive or moving in the positive direction from before. So I'd, I'd, uh, I have to caution a lot of communities we talk with, like, you know, don't take that personally because it's, it's not a personal jab at all. It's just, they stack up all the communities nationally, all the communities that were within that rating category, and then they differentiate based on that. So, you know, the things that you were doing within your control likely could result in you guys having a higher rating than where you are right now. There's things outside of your control that pull you back that are just always gonna be a demographic factor you have to face. So anyway, once we got through all that process, you had a bond offering document distributed, um, it then went out to potential investors. So they had a couple of weeks to review your document, look through your finances, comb through it, and then make a determination on whether or not, um, what we think our market interest rates was an investment that they wanted to do in your particular bonds. So they had a, a maturity schedule, they had the chance to, to buy the bonds, submit orders on the bonds, and that was the process that took place today. So we had been gathering feedback over the last week, um, and today we received orders from investors. So investors might be an insurance company, it could be a money market manager for, uh, a cult, like a municipal bond mutual fund. Um, it could be a, a bank, a banking institution in Iowa. Historically, with your city's bonds, most of your bonds have gone to either insurance companies or national... companies or national kind of money market funds. There hasn't been a lot of appetite for municipal bonds out of community banks in Iowa. That has nothing to necessarily do with your local banks. It's not a knock on them. They just, it doesn't fit their portfolio, and it's not an investment avenue that they've readily pursued. Not that they haven't had the opportunity, just when they stack up the dollars and cents and what type of investing they want to do, they don't want to be in municipal bonds for whatever reason. That's not to say it won't be that, it'll always be that way. It's just been kind of the trend over the last couple of years. And like I said, that's not meant to be disparaging at all to your banks, it's just who the investor mixes in your bond. So I find that interesting from the, just the standpoint, you know, you do have a strong community. Keep in mind, these banks did, you know, step up in 2013. They did provide some financing back at that time. So some of that is, they do have some exposure to your debt that's already outstanding. So as we got through today's pricing, we set out with interest rates that would have set your average rate right around 3.04 percent. As we finished up today, you ended up at 3.0368 percent. So pretty much right in line with expectations. We had a call with your city staff today at about 11 to kind of give them an update. As it stands right now, you have a proposal to lock in the financing on your eight point, roughly $8.3 million of debt that will be paid off over the next fifteen years for an average rate of about 3 percent. This includes a commitment from Piper Jaffray. As it stands right now, we have sold a little over $3 million to the investors, which by comparison would typically be a little bit low from where we'd be going in. Piper has basically said that we're going to backstop that at the rates right now, and now the risk then becomes ours that we get the bonds sold and the market moves against us. So that's part of our commitment. You know, if we have a balance sheet as a firm, we're offering up that balance sheet for you guys and the committing to underwrite your bonds at the rates they are right now. We do anticipate that we will get the bonds sold. It's not that we're underwriting the entire loan and we're going to own the bonds forever. We will likely get them sold. I'm just telling you, as it stands right now, based on the orders we got, it is a little bit tough. Some, you know, we do see some investors with, you know, spring break plans around Easter. It's a little bit quiet, you know. If you haven't noticed, there's been a little bit of turmoil in the stock market and the global economy. You know, some of that just kind of shakes out and perhaps part of what we're seeing with local banks in Iowa not being as active investors in this case, most of your bonds from years one to 10 are left out. So.
Wouldn't that make these more appealing?
As far as the, the market?
The volatility elsewhere.
The volatility elsewhere does. The only thing is, is that it often, when you see a lot of volatility, the typical thing for people to do is to sit on their cash and not commit it. Because they don't, when they see a lot of volatility, they don't want to be the one hitting it, you know, at the top of the roller coaster and taking the ride down. So what we see during volatile markets is you just see huge cash positions and people's waiting for more stability. But historically, yes, if you would see turmoil in the global economy, people are taking a long-term bet to not be in the stock market, there would be a lot of money piling into municipal bonds driving down interest rates. So we, we have seen that over the last five years. What we're seeing right now with rising rates is we're seeing a lot of banks analyzing their portfolio. I know this is getting a little high-level finance here, but a lot of banks kind of analyzing their portfolio and making decisions to sell and get out of municipal bonds. So that just puts a little bit of pressure on interest rates.
Sure.
But I will say that if we compare it to where we thought you would be, granted, we were being conservative back in January, your overall total costs are about $220,000 lower over the life of the debt from what we had originally built into your model. So from a modeling standpoint, I mean, your rates are right in line, you know, borrowing 15 years at 3 percent. Absent the last five years, you would have shook in your head, like, there's no way we'd get rates that low. So, but as far as hitting the market well, we looked at a lot of comparable deals, and you guys are right in line. There was a City of Altoona deal that priced today that was, they have a slightly higher rating, given that adjustment, you guys were right in line with that. So just a lot of good news all around as far as where the city stacked up in terms of interest rates despite perhaps having a little bit lower demand on the upfront. We do know of one issue last week that was 6.2 million, and it was in an Iowa school district, and the underwriter still owns the majority of those bonds. So the fact that you guys got orders today, were able to put those away was a very good sign from our standpoint. You know, there is strong investor demand still for City of Burlington. So, does that, does that help? An unlong-winded answer to your question. So in terms of your packet, there's a few pages of information. If you skip to the sources and uses of funds, you're going to see the, the funding of those project funds that Jim talked about, including a 1 percent project contingency fund that sits there to kind of, I guess, you haven't bid all these projects yet. So very common to have a small contingency fund out there. At the end of the day, if you don't spend the contingency fund, you either reduce a future year borrowing, or you apply it to pay off a portion of this debt. In terms of final debt service schedules, you do see that on the following page, it says bond debt service at the top. You can see your average or your total repayment schedules. The following page then represents what we'll call the bond pricing. So while all of your rates are either 3 percent or three and one-eighth percent, your underlying yields range from 1.7 up to 3.3 percent. So that's just how the bonds are being sold. If any of you want to put, place a big order on buying some city debt, you know, certainly you have the ability to do so. You can see what those rates will be if you want to contact us tomorrow. The following page has proposed new bonds that does then break out your repayment sources between the debt service levy, the portion that will be paid with tax increment financing dollars, and then the sales tax flood mitigation money. As far as the, the city's profile, I just took some time to update the overall numbers that I gave you back in January in terms of your debt limit, your outstanding debt, as well as the financial or other resources that are committed to debt. So you can see those updated numbers. You know, the one thing I will just note real quickly, I don't want to cause, cause of alarm here, with the debt issuance and just the timing of how that is filed onto your balance sheet, as of May 1, you will actually go over your 70 percent debt limit margin. You'll be at 72.9 percent. One month later, you pay off $4.8 million of principal, so your rate down to 65.5 percent. So it's just kind of a mid-year, mid-year blip. I did want to point that out. You know, your policy is 70 percent. So as we discussed in January, you're going to track along those lines and by all means be below-
Is there any penalty, Travis?
Nope.
Or popping over to 72? So, okay.
No, there's not. And, and, and as we look at financial policies, you know, the thing that we look at is kind of a, a year-end thing. So when you do a, a mid-year thing, sometimes it can be difficult based on timing, but we didn't see any reason to delay your bond sale and take interest rate risk for another month for that reason. So at the end of this fiscal year, you'll be at 65.5 percent on your debt limit. One thing that we've been talking about, obviously over time, is the ability to lower your debt service levy rate. You know, we're still looking about four years out on those numbers, but it does look like you will have some options as a council, provided that you guys all stay on and run again at, at that time, potentially lowering the debt service levy rate. Once you get through, we'll kind of call that plateau on your levy rate. You know, it's been alluded to at times. You're paying off some prior debt that was maybe amortized a little bit more aggressively than fit within the budget, but you're going to get there in a couple of years and things look like you're tracking well. I don't have a lot else other than just talking about policy or procedure. With your resolution tonight, you are actually locking in the interest rates, even though you're not doing all the legal paperwork, upon approval of this resolution, you authorize your city staff to sign the bond purchase agreement. Signing the bond purchase agreement locks in your interest rates. You do have one more legal step that you will do at your April 16 meeting, and then you'll receive the bond funds on May 1, at which point in time you can deposit that into a fund that you can invest until you spend the money on your project, or depending how quickly your project expenses are going out, it might not be sitting there very long. But this would complete the financing process. You don't have to listen to me probably talk before the council until probably November of next year when we start looking at this again. Although, you do have a few things related to sewer planning that we might have something kind of midsummer to just kind of refresh, so you know what that looks like. But at this time, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
I think you've pretty well covered, Travis.
Yep.
Do you have any questions or concerns in the audience? I see none. All right, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the only thing I do have on that, I have mayor's signature here. Are you signing documents for mayor tonight?
Yes.
Okay. If I can get a signature then on the bond purchase agreement, then we will, then I won't have to bother you, if that's okay? If you are willing to take a moment to sign that.
Kathery's available in his office in Des Moines tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. That would be best.
What's that?
Otherwise, you're available in your office in Des Moines.
Yeah, you can, you can write it down. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's always been a pleasure, I swear, everyone.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you. I do have to sing Kathleen's praises because as far as city clerks go, you guys have one of the best.
We know.
She's always on top of it.
Wow, thank you.
She keeps us in line.
She spoils us.
So do make sure she gets some love because this is a lot of extra work for her on this.
Yeah.
So thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Over the years, I don't think she's missed a deadline, so I, she's a, pretty much always keeps us in line. So thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. She's A number one.
All right.
Mayor Potem, I have a resolution approving a final plat for Beam subdivision.
Second.
This is a one-lot subdivision located in the county two-mile subdivision review area of the city, being just outside of the city limits, directly across the street from where city limits lie, runs down the city, center of the street, off Mill Dam Road, looking just to do a one-lot subdivision. Based on the location within the county, we are required to consider approval of this and does meet all of our code requirements, zoning code requirements for approval.
Do we have any questions or concerns in the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I think we covered it in the work session, so.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mayor Potem, I have a resolution approving a final plat for RBI Limited Subdivision.
Second.
This again, a one-lot subdivision located north of Burlington in the county two-mile subdivision review area. This again being a one-lot subdivision located just to the east of Tamer Road, splitting off approximately two acres from this lot, so it'd separate out from the existing lot, a smaller lot there with access off of Tamer Road by this service drive with an easement and northwest corner just for shared access. This again meets our code requirements.
Any questions or concerns in the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Done.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mayor Potem, I have a resolution amending the stormwater utility system fees pursuant to chapter 100.02 of the Burlington City Code.
Second. Okay, this first resolution is our stormwater fee, which in the budget, we had approved to increase 3 percent. So these fees are just increased from our current fees right now by 3 percent.
This doesn't have anything to do with the presentation that we got last, with the switching, going to a different metric?
That will be coming forward as we-
In July.
But these fees will be applicable to that.
Right, right, okay.
Any other questions or concerns from the audience?
So what I understand, historically, it was 9 percent, but now it's 3 percent. In the past, we had to raise the sewer fees. Those were the sewer fees. The stormwater, we, we've never risen.
Okay.
Since I've been here, we have not raised the stormwater fees by 9 percent. They've been 3 percent for the last few years, in line with what we've increased the sewer fees with.
Okay. Any other questions? Good? Good? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right, next, we have a resolution amending sewer fees effective July 1, 2018.
Need us, are you introducing that?
Second.
Okay, these are the fees too. When we went through the budget process, we have it in the budget to increase 3 percent. And this is where in the past, we were increasing them 9 percent. Jim, when you came, we had a 9 percent increase.
Was that last year, I think?
Since then, we've backed it off to 3 percent each year. So this isn't changing how we bill or anything, it's just increasing the current fees by 3 percent.
Again, stormwater, sewer, septic hall, our fees are all designed, I mean, the biggest thing that drives where our costs are on all of this is the sewer separation work that's going on. We're hopeful, and we continue to be hopeful, to try to work with DNR, to work with us to keep our annual increases to this level. I mean, to keep them from being any higher than this. And that's our biggest concern, is to be able to get the capital cost to, at a level that keeps us from having to go any higher. But, and we don't have any guarantees that they'll work with us on that either. But that is the driving force behind where these proposed rates are.
All right. Any questions on that one from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Next, I have a resolution amending solid waste fees effective July 1, 2018.
Second.
So this resolution will increase the solid waste fee by a quarter. It's $14 monthly now. It'll increase to $14.25 monthly. And this is based on the, like, we, you know, discussed a budget time, the increases we're seeing from the landfill fees and then our recycling fee.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Next, I have a resolution amending septic hall fees effective July 1, 2018.
Second.
These have just increased the 3 percent also. Broken record. Makes it easy for you.
Any questions or concerns about this from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Done.
None? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. This time, we will take comments from the audience.
Mike Elmer, 620 Iowa Street, Burlington, Iowa. I'm here tonight because Saturday, outside my home in my neighborhood, shots fired, and this was five or six rounds at 10:30 at night on a street on North Hill. I have a neighbor behind me that just moved to Burlington two months ago from Virginia. They are now moving out of the city of Burlington. I know that this council has passed a budget which did not increase any spending with our police. You know how I am in support of our police. You know how I am in support of our police. I just wanna remind you, as council members, that these things continue to go on. The shooting of these shots, they're literally four feet from where I walk my dog at night. When I went to bed last night, my wife had to take the dog out and literally was scared to death to go outside. My neighbors today came to me and asked, "What about our children?", because they know I have video cameras. This is a problem that costs this city citizens. Please keep it at the front of your minds, that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. We need to support our police, we need to give them what money we can, when we can, but we also need to think of what can we do as a city? To take the 10 or 12 people in this city that are causing these problems, that we know who they are, and do something about it. Because a very few number of people are costing us citizens. Your job and what you've wanted to do is to level out our population and expand. As long as these things go on, that's not gonna happen. So I just ask that you keep this at the front of your minds and that we as a city find a solution to this. I've talked to Jim today, I talked to Major Kramer today, I talked to the Hawkeye today. We have to find solutions to get this out of our city. So I'm here just to keep that at the front of your minds, please. For the people that live here, it's a great city, we gotta get this part out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Mike. You're right, it is a great city and we do have a task force that is working on that. You're aware of that, right? Yeah. I'm confident we're gonna make some strides on that, so. I'm sorry for your bad situation though.
Happened outside your house.
No, it does. It does, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah.
Freddie Starling, 517 South 7th Street, Burlington, Iowa. And I'm here tonight and grateful for honoring the police, the chief, and all, in his retirement, I'm very grateful and thankful to be a part of this and witness to this. Just wanna say, we, as clergy, I'm grateful for the chief of police, Mr. Beard, and looking forward to the next chief that will be appointed here for Burlington and working with him. And I do want to just say this, I wanna thank the city council, I didn't get to a previous meeting to mention it, for your support for the Dr. King celebration. Appreciate, we appreciate, our committee appreciates you, thank you for your support each year. I do wanna say to, is it Eric?
Yep.
I'm glad to see what's going on down at Gladys White Park and hopeful that I will be ready for the fourth Saturday in June. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Crowner, Burlington, Iowa. I'm probably a little early, but I read through the paper about this storm water situation and with me having several businesses in town, I wanna make sure I'm able to stay on top of this and follow through the whole situation. I didn't know we was gonna have a presentation on it, I haven't had time to keep track, but I just wonder if you guys have a schedule of when that'd be next time that's gonna be brought up or?
Actually, we had a, the last work session, we went through a presentation on the storm water rates, but if you have a question on specifically how it impacts yours, dealing with Nick, get in contact with Nick McGregor out at Public Works, he can help you to walk through the rate schedule, looking at your property shape to see where you fit in there. It does have a significant adjustment on commercial properties. Some commercials actually will see their rates go down depending on the size of them. Others would be higher than what they currently are, so.
Okay. I just, like I said, I've been following very close and I've seen that in the paper and with four commercial locations in town, I just-
Good Mike, I'm glad you're on top of it. And you can go ahead and watch the last city council work session on your computer, but the slides are a little bit hard to read, so if you contact Nick, he'll can shoot them to you if you have email, and then they're a lot more clear.
So, but is this something that'll eventually be voted on by the council, or is it just something that's gonna happen?
It'll be voted on, that's an ordinance change. They'll have a public hearing and a couple of, all set for three readings, depending on how they go through that process.
And when you go through that material, Mike, one of the things that's in there is we're gonna work on some components where a property owner can do some things to alleviate some of the costs.
Well, I seen that with residential, but I guess-
There's stuff there for commercial too.
I guess the thing that really gets me is, you know, when we build new, we're already required to put in a detention pond, which I realize the water still goes down the sewer, but that's more property we have to own to slow the storm sewer down. So I guess eventually, you know, I don't know what the fees are gonna do to me, I just worry about pretty soon we're gonna have so much property that we have to own to have our green space, and they also require us to have so much concrete, pretty soon, we're not, we're gonna have so much property with the, you know, we just got a tax increase too, property tax, which very significantly on Roosevelt.
Yeah, I appreciate your concerns, Mike. I'll go ahead and contact Nick, and I think you'll rest assured that your rates actually will go down.
Eventually, what I'm saying is, pretty soon you're gonna have so much property that you can't build on it to cash flow your business. It's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
I mean, I just know when I read in the paper and said it was gonna be significant rates.
Oh no, it makes you nervous, doesn't it? But go ahead and check with Nick, and I think your nerves will be calmer and you won't have to pop Rolades, I think it'll be a good thing for you.
It was a nightmare for Des Moines, or Des Moines.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the audience? I see none. How about staff? No one, no. Anyone in the back? Any good news? What good news do you bring?
I will, well, to answer Mr. Crowner's question, I will do a small presentation to kinda overview what that ordinance change will do for impact. I probably won't go to the detail necessarily that Mr. Foley did last week, but it'll still be kind of a concise presentation. Agency Street, you've noticed the intersection of the frontage road, they've hit some bad soils, hopefully it doesn't take too long to get that back in with some of the rains coming. But the flood wall, the actual wall, has been poured and constructed, so we're good to go. So if we have a flood, we can put in the temporaries, so.
Very good.
Yay.
That's a lot.
All right. I always have something.
Oh, what do you have?
Yeah, a couple of exciting things coming on in Burlington this week. Wednesday, out at the Comfort Suites, there's going to be a conference called the Circle Conference. It's been going on for a number of years. It brings together nutrition educators, nurses, teachers, and we talk about obesity prevention, so a timely topic. We're bringing in Dr. Ann, and she's gonna talk about how you, what you eat can enhance the happiness level of your life, because that's pretty, that's pretty cool. I'm gonna be talking about fad diets and how hazardous those are to people. For example, a lot of people don't know, the longer you're on a high protein eating regimen, something like Atkins, keto, a diet like that actually can impair your happiness, it actually can cause you to seek your physician for antidepressants. So it's a really powerful message, so if you're free Wednesday, come on out and join us at the Circle Convention at Comfort Suites. Also, I know John mentioned last week, we're seeking artists, so if you have any artistic ability at all, we're seeking artists to paint the benches for DPI. Go ahead and applications are gonna be downloaded at greaterburlington.com, or you can call Downtown Partners at 319-208-0056. Sounds like a sales ad, so, but really, we wanna get these benches painted really pretty, so think about it, students and artists and art teachers out there, 319-208-0056. And those of you that haven't done your taxes yet, it's a bad joke, but I'm gonna do it anyway, I've simplified your life for you. There's a form called the 1040, ask two questions. One, how much did you make last year? And two, send it in. There we go. I know, it's a growner.
I really don't have anything except an appreciation. You know, we've been through several of these things here lately about our city staff, and both outside and inside the community, people trumpet the quality of our city staff and our city leadership. So a deep heartfelt thanks, because I don't know, I've been here since 1976, I don't know if I could always see kind of a universal acclaim for our city staff, so hats off to Jim for the team he's assembled and for our department heads and the people that they have. It's really appreciated. I just wanted to get that out there. Thanks.
No, no, my, I just let everybody know, my wife and I welcomed a child into the world on Friday, so if I look like I'm tired, it's 'cause I am.
And ask Paul to.
I don't have anything, I'm on the radio on Wednesday, so.
Very good. All right, I just have a couple things real quick. The bees start playing again.
Three days.
Yeah, Thursday, 6:30. That'll be exciting. And then the Art Center has a fun lily event on Friday from 5 to 8. It's a flash sale, and there's gonna be live music and maybe something to sip on, who knows? There's also an art hop for kids, so call down and get your kids signed up for that. But that is all I have, so.
Much to close?
Sure. Second?
True.
Okay, let's move to the second.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Good job, kids.